Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to Monday in November the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three in the year of our Lord. This is the Scottsburg Common Council for the city of Scottsburg, and we'll call our meeting to order. And we begin, folks, with prayer and the pledge of allegiance. So if you don't mind me standing, I'll pray that we'll have this pledge for you. Father, we bow before you this day to thank you for the day that you've given unto us, Father. And we've added another day into our book of life in experiencing this day with you. We thank you for this opportunity, Father, to walk the pilgrimage of life. Father, we just thank you for those here in our city and in our county and in America and in this world, Father. We pray for your peace that you bring and your joy that you bring unto us. Father, we pray over Scottsburg, Father, that your presence be with our citizens. Father, that you just work in this town and this city. Thank you for a kind heart that we've seen so many times from, Father, one of the poorest cities in the state of Indiana, and yet they just pour out their hearts because you just give them the kindness of heart to do so. Father, we pray for our council. We pray for wisdom and discernment in all that we do and all that we say in leading this city. We love you, and we pray. You're just, and we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes of the October twenty-third meeting of meetings. First place, okay, sorry about that. Next, we have to roll call our Club Fraser Janors.
Mayor Amy.
Here.
Bill Hugland.
Here.
Rick Manns.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rose.
Here.
At this time, I don't know if all of council is aware or not that Chris Albertson did turn in his resignation last Monday, so he will not be serving the rest of the year.
Will that go forward and have the approval of minutes of two thousand twenty-three on both meetings? It is our motion to pass the meetings as presented. Chris Evans, so moves. Is there a second? Chuck Rose, second. Any questions, comments? Hang down all three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unannounced. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the public comment period. The Scottsburg City Council accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council, we ask to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. The mark should not focus, should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to come forward and speak? Going once? Going twice? Going three times? Close the public meeting. Next thing is new business. First thing on our agenda this evening is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty and ordinance to amend Article forty-two of the City of Scottsburg Code concerning the rules and regulations for historic preservation in the city of Scottsburg, Indiana. Do we have a motion to pass second reading?
I guess I had a question before we get that far. I've had a chance to look over the ordinance, and I guess really don't have any problems with the spirit of the ordinance. My question is existing properties. You know, we're adding quite a few new homes and properties to this list in the fifty-sixth corridor. So with regard to remodeling and, you know, demolition structures and things like that, they, these people now have to comply with the new rules? Is that correct? In regard to, sorry, say, say it's mainly new construction. Okay, but there are, there is a language in there about remodeling and those kinds of things. And then I guess my question is, if one of these properties now is identified as having historic value and it's in that corridor, then if they want to, the property owner wants to do a remodel, now they have to comply with the new rules? Is that...
I would say, I mean, without legal counsel...
No, I'm just asking because that's where I have a problem. It's, I mean, I hate changing rules in, you know, like someone's own property for, own home for twenty years, and now they want to do, you know, a remodel project, and it doesn't necessarily comply with what the historical review, Lord agrees with.
So I think for like the residential side, again, I'd have to go through specifically language to Carmen, and anyone who's on the historical review board would be able to know more than I do. But from what I understand, is anything that is the structure on the exterior, so if your remodeling project could happen initially...
Right, well, yeah, absolutely.
But it would be from the, but it would be from anything that would require the permit. So anything Carmen has currently permitted with remodels or renovations, from what I understand, it would fall under the guidelines. But that's not everything, so not everything is permitted currently.
Exactly. I just wanted to make sure.
That's how I understand it. Again, that's a Carmen decision.
And I realize that it's only on the exterior, but, you know, there are standards and examples and things of, of new construction or, you know, remodeling that would comply and those wouldn't comply. So anyway, that's, that's something I'm afraid about this week. Just, Bill, talk about that.
I would, I, you know, I, how about if we think about table in it until Josh is here so we can address some of that legal advice? I mean, I don't know how you feel about that.
I assume it, Bill.
I know Chuck kind of sounds like that.
Sure.
Were you interested in table?
Yeah, you're with, I, I would like, I would like more clarification. I'm going to need more clarification before I can support.
Laura, Laura couldn't be here tonight, so maybe the next meeting she gets may get.
That's fine. If, 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 to your knowledge, there's no huge rush in getting it passed.
No.
Okay. Then I, I move the table.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry.
Chuck, was it table? The ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty, same by, on Bill Hugland, on paper?
Aye.
Next thing is approval of the two thousand twenty-four holidays. Any questions about being back?
Nothing, nothing changed except the removal of the election days.
Yeah, the only thing that I would say is that we need to do a better job for our citizens on informing them when, I know we put it out, but I've had a lot of people in our neighborhood, they put out trash on Friday, or even I did. They looked at me and said, he's the councilman we all know, and then I forgot it, observance of Veterans Day. I think if we could be, do a little better job, I know that that's frustrating for some of our citizens, you know, they, they expect, and they take the trash out, and especially those that haven't worked until late that evening, that dog gets in it or whatever. I, I know you try.
I feature on radio.
Did you? Okay.
We do radio, newspaper, Facebook.
Okay. Well, at that point, yeah.
It's a habit, it's a habit, we, yeah.
We'll just try to do a little better. Ah, yes, I will. Yeah. It would be interesting if we could do some sort of, I know you can sign up for all sorts of texts. If we could look into that, where the city sends out a text, hey, Veterans Day, remember there's no trash pickup until Monday.
We might be able to do that through our new software.
We'll be able to do that. And so we're at a point right now where we can start putting a message on it. Everybody that's on the software.
If we could do that, that would work that way, I think that would alleviate some frustration of our citizens, but, you know, I, I, they, they work late, they come home and the dogs just rub their trash throughout their yard, so.
If you folks don't know what we've done, Scottsburg purchased a new software system and for our utilities and billing and, and being able to communicate, that's kind of what this is for. So if you're on the Scottsburg system, you've got an own account or go and get your own account, and they can still send you a bill by mail, but you can also pay online, you can, it does all kinds of things. And, and one of the things is, is just for this, to be able to communicate with our residents and, you know, this is basically going into our third month since August, September, going into our fourth. So we're still working out some of the, but the road's getting smoother, some of the bumps in the road, it's all getting smoother.
And that still may not fix it. Mr. Mayor, I want to clarify that somebody will miss the message. I get that, but if we could do something, that'd be great.
Because I think it's on the bill, it's also, Jill, isn't it?
Yeah, well, yeah.
A reminder.
And I felt bad because I put mine out, because I'm sure they were looking around while he owned accounts, but I just forgot.
I, you weren't the only one, let me see. I saw, I saw several, I saw several, so. But, but communication is paramount, to your, to your point, and I totally agree with you. Totally agree with Mr. President. Is there a motion to approve the holidays for two thousand twenty-four present?
I'll make the motion.
Present that makes the motion?
I'm second.
Second. Rick Manns, second. Any questions, comments? All three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. We have a, the next thing on our agenda is a request for city employees Thanksgiving and Christmas closure. And what days are these on?
We're asking for November twenty-second from eleven-thirty to one and December twenty-first from eleven-thirty to one. The November one, we go down to the lake, yeah, and have dinner together, and then for the Christmas, when we go out to Mid-America and have lunch together.
Basically, we bring, you know, we're using, we're using inmate, inmate crews. So typically, we bring those guys in Thanksgiving and invite them as well to join with us. So it's kind of a nice thing. So we would ask for, I guess, council blessing on this, to be able to have those two days and Christmas closure, so.
I'll make the motion.
Rick Manns makes the motion, is there a second?
I'm second.
Christian Evans, second. Any questions?
Mayor, are you okay with ninety minutes?
Ninety minutes.
I know last year, I said the same thing, sixty-minute lunch is right.
Yeah, exactly.
It is the holiday.
Yes.
It is. It is. I don't get that name Ebenezer life. So, no, but it is a, it's a good time, and, and the guys in New York serve hard, and they're good, they're good guys, and just made some mistakes, so. We have a motion to second, and all three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. What announcements do we have for today?
We have room full, so, Phil, I know, talk about public comment, I'm sure you guys are here discussing the Two Mile Fringe, or want to talk about Two Mile Fringe.
We're here to let you know that we are aware and we are vocal, and we just want to be heard, and we also want to be supportive on the flip side also.
I, I did want to bring up, I know I had spoken to some of you guys after the meeting, and I wasn't sure legally how much I could say and couldn't say because of our current situation, but I think I do have to go ahead to just kind of detail a little bit more of kind of what we're referring to. And it's not the sole reason why the Two Mile Fringe is in place, but it does have something to do with some of the decision-making and how we got here. So most of you are aware, and we've discussed the regional sewer district and the issues that we've had between the city and the, and the regional sewer district. Part of that conversation has been, over the last four years now, there's not been any communication as far as treatment of sewage. What that means is the regional sewer district serves as an entity, but all sewage that goes to the regional sewer district's pipe or infrastructure, it comes to the city of Scottsburg. City of Scottsburg just put together a seventeen and a half million dollar plant in which we had to bond, obviously, issued debt in order to make that happen. Our citizens, our citizens in the city are paying for that, obviously, that's how the rates are justified. With that being said, in the Two Mile Fringe, and furthermore, any regional sewer district area, it doesn't have to just be the Two Mile Fringe, in the current status, if they have a hundred block subdivision, a massive factory, whatever the situation might be, it is totally and legally right now under their jurisdiction that they could approve that, pump that sewage, whatever the capacity may be, pump it to the city of Scottsburg plant without notifying us, without making us aware of how much sewage that we have? The new plant, seventeen and a half million dollars, treats three and a half billion gallons per day?
We can trade up to two and a half million.
Okay, two and a half, sorry. So there is an opportunity, and again, I'm just playing hypotheticals here, but in Amazon land, for example, they take about a million dollars, million gallons per day. Now, we're not having an Amazon land. I'm just saying, just to put it in perspective, the one in Charlestown, it takes about a million gallons per day. So that would be over half, or right at half at our total capacity. So at this current stat, like in the stance that we're at, part of the rationale to the Two Mile Fringe is, without having a Two Mile Fringe and without us approving a subdivision, a factory, anything, we would have no say in what sewage would come to our plant, and when that does come to our plant and we do have to raise our rates, those rates will be reflected on the city of Scottsburg utility, utility customers as opposed to regional sewer, et cetera. So again, I know that's not justification, and I'm not here to act to tell you that it's a hundred percent correct. I'm just telling you from what we had discussed very vaguely at the last meeting, I was able to kind of provide a little more context to that. Again, not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying from our perspective, what led to this decision, that was a big factor in it, so.
And I'm just going to say, of course, I only have three more meetings, but I would say, I would encourage you all to speak to your county representatives, to one of you to serve on the Area Planning Commission or the BZA. They get that appointment. You, they are your elected officials. They get to approve, appoint someone. My suggestion was to some of, some of the county officials was that they take somebody from the Vianna group to appoint that on there. I have not heard that that has went on, but that was my suggestion. I think that you need to express that to the county officials, because we cannot appoint one of you to that. You, they can appoint you, we cannot, if I'm correct.
Correct. And the Regional Sewer Board is appointed by the county council, not by...
Is appointed by the county council. And also, they're, they have somebody to the BZA and the Area Planning Commission for the city of Scottsburg. Those county officials have that, not us. So I would encourage you, if you want your voice heard on that board, to encourage your county officials to appoint someone that would be willing to serve. That's just my opinion. I put it out, I said, that was my suggestion, I've not heard that there's been an appointment, but...
There has.
Okay, so there's been an appointment, so. I don't know whether they took it or not, but I just wanted to let you know. Okay?
Oh, hey, this council has done a lot to try to, is anybody in here on regional sewer? Just you, just one person? You're on regional sewer too? Three, three of you? Okay, so not a lot of you, so you must, must have subject tanks, so, yes.
May I make a comment?
Please.
Okay. When regional sewer came in to Vianna, and we were told that the school needed it, which anybody in Vianna will break their backs for the school, you know, we're all about the school. But we did not have one clue as to how this was going to work. In fact, we relied to, I kept all my papers. We thought that it would be just like you are, okay? You wouldn't believe some of the sewer bills, and they also told us that when they, when we paid for the material it took to put that in, that our sewer bills would go down, which was another item. And I, I mentioned this to Mr. Hugland. So there was just a lot of underhanded things done. I don't see why it has to be all the way out in the country if you have a problem, that you have to go all the way out there to try to fix the problem. To me, it ought to be here in town somewhere where we can pay it or do whatever, but that's just my opinion. But you see why we are very doubtful on that.
Well, again, to second your point, we've spent four years beating our head against the wall, to be completely frank, and we have, and again, you guys help me out, we have three hundred and sixty, I believe, city residents that live in the city limits that are on regional sewer district, and those rates are, Mayor, I know you know...
Seventy percent higher than if you were in Scottsburg.
I agree far with that.
So...
Everybody come to that city.
Swat Lake Charles.
Yeah, they're going to charge you seventy-nine hundred thousand, they charge ten hundred thousand. So it's, it's a seventy percent, we did give them a wholesale rate, and they still not moved. We've offered a wholesale rate, and we've offered it to them. We've been in, we've been basically in litigation for the past two and a half, three years, something of that nature, and...
Quite a few dollars to us in that litigation.
I don't want to get right for, I just want things to work for everyone.
No, we've been trying, I've been trying for ten years to get that done, but I've had enough success as you.
If we don't voice our opinion...
I understand.
And I don't resent anything I've said, and if I happen to don't like it, I wouldn't understand.
Well, I would also encourage not to, you know, absolutely come in here and make your voice heard, but I believe regional sewer still meets.
They do.
I'm not really sure where or when anymore, but they do have meetings, I think.
Isn't there also a total concepts?
Is it?
I think so. But, and just once again, I think that, you know, as residents of the county, you know, and those are your elected representatives, you need to talk to them, so, not that we don't want to hear you, because I think we have, I think the city council has listened, and, you know, we may disagree on a few things, I appreciate, I think BJ, I think BJ Wright?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we've had many discussions. We may not always agree, but we do listen. I hope you realize that.
We also talk to our folks.
In my area, I, I look out my front window and see my neighbors two streets over that are paying seventy percent more for the, to flush their toilets than I do, and I've been trying to resolve that for years and decades, and it's just...
And they pay city taxes too?
Yeah, they, so Kevin, you, congratulations on your victory over here from those folks.
Oh, yeah. I already did.
Did you? Well, good luck. If I can, if I can help you, any other than that.
Could I just say that, yes, I, I understand the issue with the sewer, but there's a bigger issue, that we just know that we have, how shall I say, jurisdiction again without representation.
And that's?
And in the Two Mile Fringe, there are other things other than the sewer that come up that the city has control of, and we don't want to be the annoying, that enoyment, but yet, again, as you said, we have talked to county, we've been to county meetings, we've been to Board of Fields meetings, we go to the meetings, but as a council, you do have a lot of power, if you will, over that Two Mile Fringe, and with that mantle of power comes responsibility, and it affects us that live in that amorphous Two Mile Fringe that we have the hardest time getting a map. The new UDO has provided a map. We all have a copy of that. Now we know, hopefully, where that Two Mile Fringe is. There are a lot of people on that Two Mile Fringe, although they live in that Two Mile Fringe. But my point is, it's not just the sewer. There are a lot of decisions that you all have to make that represent a bunch of people and diverse group of people in that Two Mile Fringe. You have zoned agriculture, you have at least one of the industrial zonings in that area, you have the small city watch, you have the suburban watch, and we respect that, but we also are here just to say, we're not going to let you forget us, and most of you, I don't believe are, but it's our civic duty as citizens in that fringe to a group that represents us, that we do not have direct representation, city and cities.
Oh, I, yeah, I, I'm not saying don't come here, but I'm...
You're just saying go there too.
Yes.
They're tired of us also.
Oh, we're not tired of you all, no. But, but just, just wanted to, that I wish I could help you more and get you representation on those boards, but I, does that, does that make sense?
We appreciate that, we do. And it would, we're not upset, we're seeking information...
Right.
...to avoid becoming upset. Communication, I believe, Mr. Mayor, you just said something on there earlier, communication is paramount, and I'm quoting you, sir, because I can agree with you completely, and that's why we're here, for communication. I've knocked on doors, people don't know they're in the Two Mile Fringe. That's, that may be on them, not saying it's not, but, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you one hundred percent on this, and it may be a first, that I agree with you one hundred percent on this, communication is paramount, and one of the ways that we communicate is coming to these meetings and learning, and not only voicing, but also listening and getting extra information. Thank you.
Well, and, and I'm glad you're here. I mean, I know everybody's saying the same thing, and I know it's frustrating because we're not able to provide you a solution, we're only providing what we know, which half the time may be correct, half the time may not. The reality is, and I guess we'll go back in the short-lived four years that we've all been here, is the regional sewer district kind of over, that was appointed when it was created. The appointments never changed, ever. It was the original board when, what?
Eighty-eight.
Never, eighty-two, so, maybe eighties. So those appointments were still on there, some of which were not active members. So one of the things that were clarified with some language from the state government was that those board, boards, and again, it gets into technical, state erosion control boards, et cetera, et cetera, which is not important, but however, those appointments had to be made by the county council. This is where, you've got to be careful, but I also want everyone to understand that we're not, we shouldn't have jurisdiction, but also, it might be best in some cases for this reason. When this happened, and the county council was told, you have to make appointments, these members have been on there since the eighties, some of them are not, no longer active, what they did instead was just reappoint everybody that was there. They passed the buck. There was no solution, there was no answer, there were no, you know, hey, here's appointments we need to make, here are the new jurisdictions, there's people in, in Vianna, I believe, in Johnson Township, that don't live in either of those, that are appointed to the regional sewer district, and that hasn't been remedied to my knowledge at this point. So I say this, I say this with caution, and when you go to the meetings, if you tell them that's, I'll call you guys liars. The county council has to have some accountability, right? And the reality of it is, is if the Two Mile Fringe did not exist, the county council would be appointing those to the county planning commission, in which whatever project comes before you guys in your area, you're going to depend on the same people that had the chance to right or wrong, in a way, and just chose to push the buck down the road. So this has been an issue ongoing, in which we felt like we had made headway with solutions, like Mayor said, we've made settlement offers, we've tried to do everything that we possibly could, some of which probably are a little bit too much in their favor. However, we're here, in the same position we were four years ago, and those appointments for the majority of them, I know some of them have changed since now, but the majority of them are still there from nineteen eighty-eight, and there's nothing wrong with that if they're active and involved, but some of them are.
And live in the area that they're supposed to represent.
And live in the area that they're supposed to, and it's, yeah, and it's just frustrating because, again, we're not the solution, I'm not saying we have the control, we're, you know, collecting that control for whatever purpose, but the alternative also has a lot of issues. If that makes absolute no sense, I can understand.
And it's been also, it's been also having to do with the maintenance, because typically we were getting a tremendous amount of I N I and water coming in from that system. So we get deemed by, by I D M, and yet we're not even able to go on their property and their property and fix those lines. That was one of the things in part, we're like, let us fix your lines for you. So let us, you know, be able to fix, fix the lines for you. So we have been certainly trying to do all that we can do is to get everybody on the same rate, so you're not paying seventy percent more than other people are, and also keep the lines fixed and keep, you know, I D M happy, so, it's been, it's been a struggle.
And I know you don't get to vote, of course, but we do listen, and I, we want, I grew up on Larry Lang and remember riding my bike up Vianna Hill, and I don't want that community to change myself. Of course, I'm only here for a... Of course, I'm only here for a few more meetings, but, um, I think that the committee, we feel that way. I think the whole town feels that way, that we would hate to see Vianna change dramatically. That's my feeling, so. Anything else? You guys have anything?
Do the commissioners have anything to do with this?
Yes and no?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Yes and no.
This is something I want to answer. I want to know what they can control or what they, I mean, we get to vote for the commissioners.
Yeah, county council makes the appointments to regional sewer, that is for a fact. The gray area, the reason we say yes or no, and again, I would rather him be sitting here when I say this, but double check. From our understanding, that the regional sewer mainly exists with confirmation from Scott County Commissioners. So the fact that their body is still operating, Scott County Commissioners are giving some sort of checking balance to that while the county council is making those appointments. We have zero appointments or any say in what regional sewer does, at all. If we did, we would have a decision. So the county commissioners do and they don't, that's why it's a yes and no answer.
And by state law, we're supposed to have representation on there. So if, if, if Scottsburg is, is treating the affluent, we're supposed to have by law, a person there. Also the same, what, they're supposed to have a person there, guess what? We don't, we don't have your representation.
Well, we do, but none of us have our person.
Right, yeah. We have very little say, but we still have the proof there. Yeah, fair stuff, yeah. What other questions do you have?
I have a stupid question.
Sure. What's this?
If these people on these boards are doing their jobs, why aren't they fired?
Elections have consequences. I know, and it's.
So you can be elected and, and not go to meetings and pick up your check every month or week and, and nobody says anything about it.
There are a lot of politicians that do that.
There, that would be a question of the county. We, we do not have any control over that. That would be a question of your county council and your county commissioners.
But there still should be regulations and, and people.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not a lawyer, I can't, and our lawyer's not here, so.
No, I mean, it just, you know.
It doesn't make sense.
Well, it's, that, that goes back to the county council, if they do not do their job, they have to appoint them and if they aren't doing their job, they need to remove them.
Our, it's Prince, our county councillor.
Commissioner.
Commissioner. He does not do his job. We asked him to come to meetings, he actually came in my shop one day and, well, I, I'm about to butcher it, he said, I have nothing to do with that, he said, I can't do anything about that, and he just walked out the door and I thought, you know, you, you should at least be here representing us. You were elected to do a job and he's not very good at it and I tell it to his face, so.
Your, your three commissioners are like the mayor and the county councils are like these guys. These are the guys that handle the money, these are the guys that make the ordinance of the laws, they handle the money.
Budgetary.
It's all budgetary and, uh.
Well, I mean, you say, you know, talk to these people and talk to these commissioners and that, it doesn't make any difference. It really doesn't unless you're on this end, so makes no difference.
Well, I just want to say that my only stance is the city still does have the Two Mile Fringe and you have jurisdiction over that Two Mile Fringe. And quite frankly, I don't care if it's sewer, if it's selling property that you own there, I don't care what it is, you have that right and I respect that, but also respect, again, that there are people living there in that Two Mile Fringe who can't, who couldn't vote the latest election. And yes, we do have representation, but we don't have representation directly on this council.
Right.
And so that needs to be very aware though.
Correct, but this council approves the Two Mile Fringe, but that is under jurisdiction of the city planning commission. And the planning commission has appointments from the county, also does the BZA. So while we're approving the Two Mile Fringe, we do not have any say over it once it's approved. That's the planning commission in which the appointment, I believe, is Todd Ritchie from the county and he's also serves as the city planning commission president.
And his phone's been ringing off the hook, I give it to you, but, so you, you have, I'm having a hard time seeing where, and I apologize for my density, but I have a hard time seeing how every time I mention the Two Mile Fringe, I'm referred to the city as the city of Scottsburg because I am told, and the lies I tell are the lies I'm told, that the city of Scottsburg has jurisdiction, again, to that word, over the Two Mile Fringe and I see heads shaking, so I'm, I'm assuming that's correct.
We only have jurisdiction on planning and zoning.
Only on planning and zoning.
Correct. So you don't pay city property taxes, you don't pay, it's only, it's only from the planning and zoning. So if there's a new, uh, subdivision, a new factory, anything that changes zoning, it has to come through to the BZI. Well, planning commission, there's a variance request that goes through BZA, which the county also has an appointment on BZA.
Okay.
And then that zoning change would come to us.
Right.
Like in.
For, yes.
Yes, it was like to go from agricultural to a R one or R two or whatever it would be.
Right.
We would have a final vote and, uh, and, you know, and I think.
Right.
I can only say from, from our past experience, we do listen.
Yes, you do and I'm not denying that at all, but as to why I'm here anyway, I won't speak for everybody else, okay? I'm here because I feel that since the city has jurisdiction over the Two Mile Fringe, I do have access to other people on other committees, I can go to the Board of Appeals, I have, I can, but since you have jurisdiction over the area in which I live, I want you all to know, I'm here and I want you to be aware that it's more than sewer, it's more than its way of life. And we just want you to be aware of I, I should say I, it's a, we just want you to be very aware. We know the power that that, the city, if you will, has over that area and we just want to feel that our voices are heard and I appreciate the fact that you all taking all your time to hide and letting us speak, but that's my concern. I hang the sewer bill, I'm not worried about that, I mean, that comes with the territory. Been in areas with sewer situations before, but I just feel unrepresented and that's why I'm here.
Yeah, and I, I can't, I don't know that we can fix that and it'll, because, you know, with, with representation comes the taxes and the city taxes and that's, you know, that's, that's just the way it is. There's a privilege for those city taxes that, like us, where I live, we do not get city electric. We're on the city sewer, city water, but we don't, we do not get city electric. So our electric bills, Kevin's in our neighborhood, our electric bills are higher than the city's. You know, it just, we even know we're in the city.
Right.
And we pay those city taxes and, and, and that gives us the right to vote. Uh, and I don't know that we can fix it other than listen to you.
And that's all we're asking for.
Thank you, who else would like to speak up tonight?
I believe everyone here feels the same way as what she's saying. I mean, I think we all speak up and we all laugh her a hundred percent because she has been able to say why, how we feel. And I think that any of you being in Vianna do feel the same way.
Well, thank you. Anything else? We'll go on to our announcements then. Uh, what announcements do we have? We have, uh, let me, let me make one announcement, we had a great time of Halloween. Jill passed out four hundred and eighty-four thousand pieces of candy, just kidding, but it felt like it. It was a great time, uh, there were just waves of kids, it was a cold night, just waves of kids coming through there. And, uh, so it was just a fun time, but I think it was probably over four thousand pieces of candy here, six thousand pieces of candy handout, so a lot of candy. Uh, we did have a fire going on right now on Moonbowl Road and, uh, in, not Moonbowl Road, but Fair Brown. Fair Brown Road at the Lumberjack Platter. The fire got into those wood shifts and right now it's extinguished up, we have to take a bag full out there and start pulling some of that soap, it was burning underneath, they got the top, it was still burning underneath. So we are working there, so you can see stuff going on, so that's what's going on. Uh, anything else for this, this evening? Okay, or you have a long favorite farm?
I'm like, what was your?